Ready for the public meeting on 5 Double Hill? Who's here to talk about that?
Yeah.
All right.
Just find Jay.
Right there. Okay.
No, they're asking for my representation.
Got you. Okay. Okay, this is a... This is a public meeting on 5 Double Hill to talk about proposed alterations and approvals I put in. Jay, are you the presenter?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
So the first headed toward the top of the stairs. Some lighting for the house. So there were two different lights that actually weren't approved originally. I'm sorry. Share. I thought I had each one each, but I guess we can share.
We can share. We're very...
This is an ad book of the actual lights that were constructed.
Are these not approved or approved?
Originally they weren't approved.
Okay, they were not.
They were not.
Okay, so they've been added?
They've been added.
Because they're already installed?
They've been installed. And so this came up basically when Joe was doing his walk-through for when we filed for the temporary CL. Joe came out, take a look at the house, take a look at the cut sheets. And so all the landscape lights matched. The only thing that didn't match were the actual lights around the house. So there's nine of this B, which actually is shown on the thing around us, is here. It is, you can see the sections here. And then there's two of these As, one at the front entrance and one over here. And so from everything that was installed, we ended up having a total movement count of sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-eight. And what's originally was approved was actually over twenty-two thousand. So even though these two have changed, there was a significant change in the original approval. So there's nine of those... Two pendant lights. One at the front, one at the back. Temporary CL.
So this is a proof of the year?
Those are just now... I don't know. There was like seven thousand.
So each of these, this guy and that guy, each of those generates three hundred watts?
Yeah. And this is the original...
Three hundred watts?
So Jay, are you going to tell us if these are dark sky compliant?
Those two pendants aren't. These two lights, these lights aren't.
Well, yeah.
Is there one for the women's?
And when I was... Basically, my argument for...
Which one? Half of the total was these two pictures.
Were over six thousand and it's lower. That's how...
Yeah. And the total. For the rest of it.
They reduced the... Yeah, so the lights themselves, the B lights, were actually lower than the actual original lights that were intended for the house. And then it's also some of the... There was some minor reductions in the actual landscape lights.
Also, the original decision had that, that porch area that had lighting under there, that got eliminated when that became internal space. There was some other just...
So where are these things? Are these still hanging on the side of the house? Are they under a socket?
Porch here.
Are they under a porch?
A porch.
Yeah, they're... Okay, so they're in the covered area?
Yep.
Yes.
And that one over there. So this is... You can see the candidates are basically the columns for the second floor above. So that's enough.
Okay, so they are, they're not just like open-ended?
Correct. They're underneath. And as I mentioned, that's the...
They're four.
Where the ad book now, we're just under sixteen thousand nine hundred. And the original approval was for twenty-two thousand six hundred. So we are significantly lower.
This is the new picture. Can you show me? I know this, our needs are...
Sure.
But where are these?
So that's the... So these are the Bs. So you have them along each door. So these are doors on the upper section. This is a door going down into the basement at the bottom of the stairs. So each single door hits, you know, basically they have two other garage here and the one in each single door.
I'm going to ask the obvious question. So how did this happen? That these unapproved lights all made it onto this house?
Sometimes during construction, there's changes here and there that the subcontractors don't know that, you know, they're unaware sometimes. It goes on the house.
I'm trying to buy that. I'm trying to buy that act, but I'm not sure I do.
You would think that. Well, what it's... They did a very good job here overall during the field changes. Because we've done a few field changes. And there were two things that were done without field changes. And that's what we're discussing. What is these two, these two sets of lights? Which overall, in the scheme of everything...
So Lisa's done with like, well, let's just put them in and we can always go back and report afterwards.
No.
What the heck? They'll shrug and say yes because it's less?
It wasn't done then.
Are we being suckered? Is what I'm asking?
I don't...
How do you know we don't have BB guns?
You might have BB guns.
You know, I mean, is this just a way to sort of backdoor it? You know, like, oh, let's just do it.
Well, that'd be a weird way to do it because they reduced the lumens. So that's the only two thing with that. You guys, I think you guys would have a... Would have them be the two pendants, which they are both under cover. And I understand that they are, they aren't...
They're not dark sky.
I know they're not.
And even close.
Yeah.
I forgot to go grab, I forgot to grab the file. I can't head upstairs and get it. I thought they were pendants anyways that were approved there.
Originally approved.
What, like three hundred watts?
So these are actually here and there. So there were a pendant. There's one pendant that was originally approved. Three hundred watts?
It was seventeen hundred lumens versus forty-two hundred.
Right. Forty watts?
That was one hundred watt. This is five sixty watt. So it's...
Tripling the...
It is. Originally, they had fifteen sconces and they reduced them down to nine. So they basically put the sconces down.
So where is... They don't bring the sconces back?
So on these here, so that's the pendant. Okay. So originally, there was nothing. Well, they had two. They had two on the outside with two sconces, but those were removed. So instead of the two sconces, they were...
But this is the patio.
Correct.
So what is B?
Yep.
That's in the wall.
Yep, so those lights, most of those lights, they have a couple on the side here. They weren't installed. A couple in the middle. So basically, I know what they... Two sconces were removed from the column to the pendant.
It's not, I'm sure it's not shocking to you that we're...
We're just slightly skeptical.
But we're having, we're having a little trouble with this. Does that shock you?
No. When I saw these, I figured that's...
That's good.
Yeah, these are okay. But these guys, wow, you're going to be able to see those from quite a way away.
Yeah, because you're way down what I know.
Yeah, just looking at the crags here.
Well, it's also, it's also the barn comes first.
May I ask a question? We are about others.
Have we done that? I think, I think we've had our reaction. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. This light, the one that we're talking about, is the one over the front door? The one that shines into my bedroom, keeping me awake at night? Yeah.
Well, three hundred watt picture?
Until, you know, I think it's on some sort of timer.
Probably.
And ultimately that goes off, but it's great.
Are they living there now?
Yeah, they have a tent.
Yeah. We've got to discuss about those pendants.
So they can either shield them?
Yeah.
Or replace them?
I'll go with the one that was...
Yeah, what was it? But what is it look like?
So that's this one there.
Yeah, see, it had the frosted glass. It had a hundred watt.
So you're okay with the light being...
Yeah, these are okay. Yes, these two.
What were these replaced with? Those are the sconces.
I think it's still B.
Yeah, it's still B. So see, very similar.
Yeah. These are LED.
Yeah. They're all shining now.
I mean, it doesn't have to be this, but it has to be something that's not...
That's it.
It's a can't live to play with.
Does the front and back light match? Because I asked that. I mean, they've got this on opposite sides of the house. Maybe the front entrance is for a porch for them. I assume this is on the back side of the house, a porch? Am I wrong in going to...
Front and back.
Front and back. It's two of them. So one in back, one in...
Okay, which is the one that is more public?
This is the one at the front.
Right, so the driveway. So the other one...
I'm not sure the crags would necessarily agree.
Yes.
Is it the front one that's...
Which one is yours? Johnson's at seventeen.
So you're the one from Joe.
It's about the same distance.
Wow. Is that bright? That far? Wow.
We'll be looking for them.
We'll be blind if I like the drive up there.
I can't imagine Josh, I can't imagine this.
Yeah, I know. They could always, they could always... They can also have a custom frosted glass.
Right. They can also rewire it so that it's rated for less, for lower light.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be watts. You really don't need more than a hundred, maybe a hundred fifty, but it's really...
It's brighter outside than inside.
Some places, I think it's Johnson's.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I mean, they're like this guy. Where they have to find something that's just a little bit less...
So the second reason why we... Have the entrance with the... Which is another... So... So this is the second... Not approved field change. I don't know if you sent them the...
You sent them the...
Not the memo, but they're, that's basically the text of another one.
Oh, it's exactly the text.
Okay, then I sent them the one from Tom to Cam.
What is it?
So this is the front entrance.
Is this post light here or what is...
No, that post light was approved. It's the wall.
Oh, it's the wall.
Originally, we never had a wall designed to have the original... Kim is available by phone if the board would like to bring her in to discuss this.
So here's the road.
It's a set of the colors of those.
This isn't the scenic road, is it?
No. The actual...
Which is that?
At the bottom of it, yes, that's the street at the bottom.
And this is facing Double Hill?
Yes.
So this has all been cleared?
So what happened? So this is the original wall that's right there? Show us. Yes. So this is...
So these two little things here must be...
The existing wall? This is the new wall, which is this section right there.
They did a very good job matching the...
And so there's a better...
And this wall wasn't originally meant to be there at all?
It wasn't part of the original approval setup. And so what we have is here, we have the, what they did with the wall, they also added in some additional plantings in front, which you can see there's some little shrubs and stuff like that.
So these are the little azaleas and things that they put in. And they've got a couple who are for every side.
So there's no mortar in the wall. It is dry-laid. It is actually stones that were on-site. The contractor who built the wall actually cleaned the stones. That was the problem. Cleaned the stones, put them like, in basically in a manner that didn't match the results on-site. But it's actually stones from the site. They weren't, they're not, they're not mortared or scattered, dry-laid.
The pillar looks really out western.
Yeah, with that wall there.
Yeah.
They should put that light on the wall.
You're right. They should put the light on the wall.
So some of the things that we had, we spoke to Joe and Kim about was aging the wall to make it more look like it was, it's better in keeping with what was there already.
How are you going to age it?
I don't, I think Tom and Kim...
Push them around a little.
Lots of big good stuff.
What they do is they do flatter milk.
Yeah, and stuff like that to get the moss on them and all that. And it's not going to be a real, it's not going to be a kept area. What they did is some little, what they put there is not as if they're going to be taking the leaves out.
Yeah, no, I like the fact that they just sort of have leaf litter.
Yeah. Exactly. So that's what they're going to want to have for that area anyway. So when it, when eventually starts, the moss starts growing in and that, it's going to look like it's better. It won't look exactly like the rest of the wall that goes down the road, but they'll eventually look like it's always better.
So they're not going to put any change directly around to soften that big ugly black stone right there?
The problem we have right now, and that's the part, the part of the reason why there was a little gray change there was that a lot of that sludge, that's how come that driveway never got, not changed for the location and stuff like that. So in Tom's summary, he talked about how they, they only put various, some basically plantings with the small root system, stuff like that, because they can only put a little bit of gray in there.
So what are they doing around here? I mean, I assume they want something to hold this during all heavy rainstorms and like, just like around here. Yes, it's got a little litter, that's nice. But I assume they won't just have this dirt with tiny...
No, I think once, yeah, I think it's they're going to eventually have some.
They'll have a few of, you know, the Delaware Valley. But under that, they'll... They're low and they'll...
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is there a landscape package type involved?
Yes.
Who was the landscape?
It was Ryan Associates. They had done the original approvals of the...
So they knew better.
They did know better.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to come with that.
They should have known better.
I mean, how do you know from this to this? And then, and then from this to this?
I think that's, I don't think that's from the, from the design from Tom Arcade. I think that did more with the whole water. I think they were going to give them with the whole water.
But it's not what was approved?
I know.
We come back to that old question about, and it wasn't what it was approved. Everybody just shrugs and says, oh, well, let's do it. And then we'll come back to the board and they'll say, yeah, whatever.
That's right. You're not going to make us take it out, are you?
Yeah, I mean, this is like, I am tired just to hear you.
I'm sorry, that wasn't the intent. I was actually, I was a manager, it wasn't the intent.
Yeah, what was the intent?
The intent was to just try and try to extend those walls forward.
Did you know that there was, there were conditions, were conditions on this?
Absolutely.
Well, then why did you ignore them? He ignored them.
But you know, you're the professionals. You should have advised mine.
The project manager.
Like, wow, you know, he's a contractor.
I'm taking home forgiveness right now. No, I'm not helping, but I don't want to let Jay stand up here and take the heat.
He's not taking the heat.
Jay knows us.
That's all I wanted to do was just step up.
But I mean, to let everything, to let it be client-driven, when the clients know that they have a special permit, that everything is laid out, and then to just say, we're going to have to do this.
Well... So now we take responsibility when we tell you to take it out?
Yeah.
Take it out?
Because this is just getting to be like, let's just go have the de facto amendment to the planning board. Yeah. How far can you push it? Right.
We're looking at a modification that, that, that made this wall, this wall look like that wall. Exactly what we did on Love Lane.
Yep.
Exactly. But to have this, the temptation five years from now is to have this wall grow into that wall. That's what's going to happen. You'll get the creep and all of a sudden, we're going to get this nice geometric stone wall that doesn't look anything like the rest of the street. So that would be my position, just rebuild it, something that looks like the old stone wall that's there.
That was in the original conditions, was it not?
Oh, no.
There was no wall?
Just a bunch of just made rocks there from stone closet. That's really what was there.
And if we had reviewed that, we would have said, let's redo it in style.
Just like existing stone wall.
Further down the site, there's like, from this section here, and further down that site, there's that wall just continues. And there was a little breakup. So I know we had discussions about matching that wall along that area.
Yeah, we did.
But we just never, it was never formalized on the plan set because we never talked about doing the entrance.
Plans will want that. They're pretty easy to undo and change and size and right and all kinds of stuff. But this is different.
Now, we've been talking here, and you know, looking at this, I mean, yes, on principle, take it out and replace it for what it is. But in looking at what's here, you know, if you took out this monolith, that looks totally out of place.
A big square rock?
Right. And put the lamp, put the light on this new wall.
I don't think you would have put it on the wall if it's going to look like the old wall.
Are you going to, are you going to all live with that? I mean, are you actually take a look at the difference between that and that?
No, that's what I'm saying.
You're not understanding, this is, what's going to happen here is that this wall is going to creep out that way.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I'm saying this wall needs to be, needs to look like this wall.
Okay.
And therefore, you can't put this kind of a lantern on a rubble type wall.
No, you wouldn't put on that. I was saying, you know, that if we leave this here, get rid of it, take that away, bring the lamp there, specify that this wall does not creep.
But now you have two different, they look totally different. Is that okay with you?
I think the wall has to match the old.
I think that that would, that would become camouflage by vegetation anyway. I think it looks a heck of a lot better than this post.
Do we approve that post exactly the way that's built?
That is the picture.
Where is this plan of this post?
It doesn't look like it's there.
Is this...
Looks like it's behind the wall. In front of the wall. I'm really...
This is the picture.
But what about this?
It says on granite post.
In the original plans?
Yeah. No, I don't think that there was any description that provided that.
Did they even have a measurement on there?
You know, every time you miss something, it's...
How they put the measurement on there?
Very funny.
This is the original approval set.
Yeah.
The lights are right there. This is the post.
So now it's on the other side?
No, it's the same.
This picture makes me...
We're looking, this is going to the house.
Yes, exactly.
It still looks like it's behind the wall.
It's behind the wall.
Or in front of the wall.
In front of the wall.
Well, it is in front of the wall. It's the design of the wall. It's the post.
But it looks like the wall continues behind it.
Yeah, might have, they might have placed it here. Yeah, I think you're right. It's probably three feet to the left.
I was just suggesting that as a possible...
So David, you're saying basically it's this big ugly toad square piece at the end that we set it on?
This sod, sod granite post, you know, versus the...
Not today, but it's very...
It looks good.
Don't see it till June.
Probably.
Yeah, but then you can see it along here. It really changes right on here.
Yeah, it does. It's a huge difference.
I mean, it's very rubbly and...
Temptation's going to be, just straighten the whole thing out.
The wall has to be changed back to the old place. It cannot change back to others. Rebuilds exactly the same as the old wall.
Maybe we could go out and take a look at that wall. Because that's really not even a wall.
It's just a bunch of walls.
But this is what we did on Love Lane. I mean, the temptation is to make these geometrically nice, almost like cartoons of stone walls.
I think they're just trying to make just a physical entrance of the driveway, have a little bit of definition to it. That's really all it tells us. The stones that are coming out of gray here are probably about a foot above or anything.
But he did it without coming back.
I know he did.
They would have had, would have been going through the... No. It was your fault.
We're going to let it take.
I have to take the heat. That's where I'm at with it. And I know they don't like this light post at all. That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah.
They like it, but they don't like the size of it.
What don't they like about it?
Look at it.
It's too big?
So can Kim have a thought, take a look?
Yeah, I have her on hold.
No, I mean, this is the kind of thing that's...
It's too manly.
Exactly. David just said, it's very manly. So Kate didn't actually go and look at this?
Well, after, after the fact, we've all, after this was all done, we had taken a look at it. So, you know, and all of your comments are the same, and that's why they're in front of the board. Ideally, it would have been a month and a half before now, but...
Well, was this Kim's read on it as well?
Yeah.
This is a total analogy with Love Lane.
Oh.
Where, you know, you have to convince people that part of what people like about Western is the informality of the streetscape. And, you know, it's, it's really hard to convey that. The temptation is to make it look, you know, manicured.
Before you ordered to take it down and rebuild that, I'd ask that you go out and look at it first. It doesn't, I think you're looking at something that might not look as bad as it might look in the photos.
I agree. We need to go look at it. We may decide all kinds of stuff happens when you change.
Well, that's fine, too.
Maybe worse than you...
And this was, these big...
Maybe we're bred having to ask.
That's fine with me.
But you're right, we should go. But you're right, it may just work out great.
Those photos are very close to when it was built, so it's, I'm sure that's been a little bit aged.
But that's not going to happen until it smarls.
Maybe the snow moves some things around.
But maybe they'll, it's flowing into that.
It loosened it up.
Okay, so we'll, we'll schedule what site where we can actually see something besides the snowbank.
You said the owners were not happy with the monolith?
I don't think they liked the post.
So in anticipation of the site walk, maybe they could come up with some ideas about what they'd like to see. And try and wrap this all up one... Together.
Lightwise, light perspective.
On all strokes.
Would you have one comment?
One more question while you both are, both are here. We're at seventeen Double Hill, as you both know. And you very nicely put in a berm of mature firs right at the end of our, our property line. And the plan, obviously, is they will grow ultimately, give us even more privacy. One has already died and was replaced by marcella. Now, two and three are on the, one of them near dead, the other well on its way out. And it's my understanding that any of those trees will be the responsibility of the owner and will be replaced ad on infinite. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to be confident in that.
That's very interesting that they all died.
Three.
Three, three died.
Very red.
Wet. But it almost looks, the ones that went just totally dried out and turned brown. And they seem to be the same, the same type of trees.
Maybe that's one of those things that we ought to have the landscape department back and maybe talk about something that would be a little bit more damp tolerant now. Rather than just have these poor owners stuck to replace it.
Exactly. And they never grow.
Yeah, because they're always...
No, we don't want that. We, we want to be able to enjoy them, and we don't want to... We don't want to have to sit on my patio and look at it dentures.
Yeah. Well, we can do that. Also, when we take a look at the stone wall.
Perfect.
Will we do those?
Perfect. As you have your back to our house, tree number one to the right was replaced. That was the one that totally croaked. Then tree number two, no, tree number two, tree number three and tree number four, I think, are both...
You'll be notified at the site walk in any event.
Perfect. And we are both retired now, so we can... I just wanted to ask that question.
Okay, Jay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Here's another Love Lane.
Do we want, do you need one for our...
Not, not as I thought.
Thank you all very much.
I know.